Good evening, everyone. Today is January 22nd. At 6:30 PM, I'll call the meeting of Lennox School Committee to order. And just, I'm not sure if I should tell people who are works who are watching CTSB that they can watch this on CTSB. However, you can watch this on CTSB. And, yes, and then I'll just move through the beginning of the agenda. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Correspondence, I didn't put anything at the time the agenda went out, but I've since, our whole school committee since received a letter from community member Sandy Lacy of Sunset Avenue expressing concern and wanting to draw people's attention to the forum tomorrow night, Tuesday, January 23rd, here at Town Hall from 6:00 to 8:00, and that is about discussing the issues of the rest of the river and the remediation that's happening. And our way of having this section on correspondence, as I'm letting you know, received the correspondence, and the community member asked, she's a family, family members in Morris, asked that we call your attention to that event. I'm also going to just take a moment, too, to call your attention for those of us that get the weekly emails from our principals, Principal Ames' weekly email attached, and some people might have had trouble opening the attachment, but the student publication, there have been two issues so far, of "The Chronicles of Good Things That Never Make the News." So if you click on it now, you might not get access, but I'm gonna, Ms. Getson supports the students that are writing this. It's written by anonymous, but it's really, really fun and worth read, and actually does highlight some of the things that are happening in school. So we are creating a system where I'm going to send that to the school committee separately so that we can be sure that you can get that link, and I'll send it out tomorrow. But it's fun, and it's nice to have the kids focusing on things that are happening, and that they're doing a lot of this writing. Some of it's tongue-in-cheek, and some of it's really fun and celebratory. Last month, they highlighted the Coach LaFave event, and they've also highlighted some of the arts and music events that are happening, so it's really good, and I'm pleased to see the kids putting this together. So I will be sending that out to you. For board report, we have a school committee meeting minutes of January 9th, 2024. If anybody, I'll entertain a motion to approve and/or any comments or questions or corrections.
I move to approve the school committee minutes of January 9th, 2024.
Second, anybody have any comments or questions?
I'll abstain from voting. I was absent.
And...
I was absent as well, but I watched.
Okay, that's fine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is a quick retreat summary, I will...
I'm for and to abstain.
Yes, that's enough, right? As indicated in our publications, we had a school committee retreat on Wednesday, January 17th, and I want to thank you all again for hanging in there. We stayed a significant amount of time past our timeframe, focusing on mission, vision, goals, and priorities, and to begin our discussions to lead into both school committee and superintendent goals as we finish out this year and head into next year. We are going to schedule a follow-up continuation retreat after we conclude some of these budget meetings, because we have a lot on our agendas coming up, and I'll be reaching out to connect with people at a, for a date sometime in the next week or so. And I want to thank you all again for great conversation and focus on our vision and values around Lennox School, Lennox Public Schools. I really, really feel fortunate to have a committee like this, that everybody just really wants to dig in and work hard and figure out what, what we need, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Okay, turn it over to you, sir.
All right. So I also wanted to recognize the group of volunteers that sit at this table, having, that being the third retreat. I feel that citizens of Lennox are very, very fortunate to have such a group of dedicated people to give their time and roll up their sleeves and work together to try to figure out what would be best for the students, and so I'm very fortunate to work with this group. Thank you. Another recognition, there were 14, 14 teams at the Blender Bowl of the quiz, our quiz team, we sent multiple quiz teams, but one of our, one of our quiz teams won, and this will be, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Ames, but the fifth year in a row?
At least.
At least, that they have taken the Blender Trophy. Kudos to them. Next is the Be Smart Resolution. So Be Smart is a national organization that is about the safe securing of firearms, not, not anti-firearms, but the safe and secure storage of firearms, and they are, they have been asking local school committees to pass a resolution in, in favor of that, and part of the resolution is that I would send something home, when packets go home, to parents and guardians, that would explain the importance of keeping guns secure and out of the hands of, out of the hands of children. That requires a vote, the resolution.
Did everybody get a copy of the, what is the suggested resolution based upon the Be Smart program in their email? It's a lot to read, so I don't know whether we want to, either we could potentially reference the document, or if we want to put it out just for discussion first and see, because if there's not an inclination to approve it, we wouldn't go to the trouble to read it all, but I would put it out there for, we've had a chance to discuss it, I think, in subcommittee meetings, and it's been sent out, but we haven't really had a chance to discuss it, so I don't know if anybody wants to open up the floor for discussion about the resolution. The other option would be if people felt like you haven't had a chance to read it and want to get more information, we could table it to another meeting. I have the text here that was sent out, it's attached to our agenda, but I'll leave it to somebody to decide if you want to take it up for discussion.
I only had one question, but I don't know, am I allowed to ask it?
Yes, because I opened up the floor.
Because it's a vote or anything?
Well, at some point, we'll vote if there's a motion on the floor, but if you want to ask a question first, I guess that's okay.
One question. The communication from you to the adults, would that be electronic? Would these packets not be going home in the kids' backpacks to be delivered to their parents, or would it just be a communication between you and the adults via email or electronically?
It could, it could be either, or, or both. The way that, the way that it is phrased is that it would be part of the packet that goes home, and some of the, some of the packet would be electronic, and some of the packet is paper. It could be either or, both, if you have a preference.
Well, I'm only speaking for myself. I guess, I guess my concern would be, because I'm assuming this is for elementary as well as middle school, it's, it's, it's the school committee, it's the school district, and I'm completely in support of this program. I personally would like to see any communication, because this is adult conversation, adult situation, decisions made by an adult as to how they want to address their children, and I would hate to put this information into a child's backpack and bring attention to it more so than needs to be, and I also think it's up to the adult in the student's life as to whether or not they want to discuss this, be a part of this, and how much information they want to offer them about guns and gun safety and storage. So that's, that's my own personal preference. I, I completely support the program, but I kind of think it should be an adult conversation.
I can very easily make that an electronic communication with families.
I'd love to hear what anybody else thought, too, but I, I'm just putting my thoughts out there.
No, I'm glad you mentioned that, and I...
Not holding to disagreement or...
I totally agree. You know, I think what I worry about is it being sent home in backpacks, and instead of, you know, kids giving that information to their parents, it starts side conversations in school about, well, my dad owns a gun, and here's where he keeps it, you know, we don't want kids sharing information like that. So I agree, it's especially important to let parents decide how to, how to address that topic with their kids, but I am in full support of the program.
I have two questions. One is just, it looks like we're, in addition to sending it home, there would be annual registration materials on each school site with a signature? What does that look like, and is that something we, we even do for anything else, or are we creating a new process?
It is, no, it is not something that we, it is not something that we currently do. From time to time, we do have information available at the schools for, for different things, events, information, but this, for this, this would be, this would be completely new. And where it is a draft, it can be amended in any way that you...
Yeah, well, I guess that my, in my, in any way related question is, I don't understand why this is coming to the school committee. It seems like an extraordinarily clear instance of something that does not fall in our jurisdiction for the, I mean, we could think in other terms, we would never pass a resolution directing anything be sent home or something we have at our office we're signing. That's not what we do. I don't think we've ever done anything like that, and in this instance, I think we already have two ways in which a resolution on the matter doesn't describe, like, doesn't necessarily align with how the district actually operates, what we would want it during this case. So I guess, while, as everyone has said, I'm certainly in favor of gun safety, I'm perplexed that this is before us, or that we would consider issuing a resolution directing the superintendent to do these things.
So I asked a similar question when representatives came and met with me, and they said that they felt, because of the statistics on child, childhood deaths by firearm, that they couldn't, they couldn't wait for the state or the federal government to act, so they were taking it to school committees, school boards, because they felt that the information could get disseminated pretty effectively, and that the information could get into the hands of parents to make better informed decisions. I think that was their, I think that was their assumption.
I appreciate that. If I were an activist group, I would ask school committees to pass a resolution as well. That doesn't mean that it is something we should do. I guess, and I, to the point about the electronic communication, as well as to the, my concern that having people come and sign something is not something we do, I guess my strong recommendation would be that, if you, Dr. Collins, also feel that this is a serious issue worth bringing to the attention of parents, that we ask the principals to include it in their letter home, in their, we have a regular channel of electronic communication directly to parents, the district usives, how it sees fit, including for issues of public concern, and I would much rather that have, that have already happened, or that it now happened, than that could be working its way through the school committee process.
Okay, I have a second question. So it, it's typically cosponsored with the police department within the community, or...
So when this was, when this was first brought to my attention, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't in any way contrary to what our law enforcement folks... So I did have a meeting with the chief, who, who read it over and saw, saw no issues, and was in support of having firearms safely secured and out of, and of children, so he did not...
So are they taking part in this in any way, shape, or form? Are they, you know, doing any type of outreach, or, or it would just be their, like, in support of it, but it would be, it's a school thing?
So it is, it really is the, it's the law in Massachusetts, it's the law. But I don't think at this point that the Be Smart folks have been going specifically with police departments. I reached out to our, because I didn't want to do anything that would be, that they would feel was contrary.
Right. Well, I mean, I personally would just go back to what I originally said, I'm completely in support, but I'm just really encouraged that the communication be between you and the adults, and let the adults decide how they want to bring it into their home, or how they want to discuss it, with the information that they have in front of them.
That's easy to do.
Any other questions, comments, and/or if, if somebody wants to make a motion, we can make a motion. If the consensus is that we feel that our superintendent is perfectly within, within his purview to support public health initiatives that actually reference Massachusetts law, that, that point is well taken, but I'm, floor is open if anybody wants to make a motion. If nobody makes a motion, we've, I think a few of us have spoken about how we feel about it. I do support any communication to our, to our entire community that the law requires that we, that we safely, securely store any weapons if people have them in their homes, and that is the requirement of the law. So when we have these, we have other types of public safety things that we talk to families about, about fire safety, we talk to kids about it, so that is something within the purview of when we have our police officers come to our schools, or we have health education in our middle and high school. So that is a good point, that we can educate our community about health and safety and law, and applicable laws, without having to have a resolution. But I'm, it's on the agenda, and if someone's so inclined to move it, we can. If not, we can move on.
I think I would, if possible, like to, I don't know if it's a second read, but I'm interested in seeing how the communication goes out, too. I think we need to be careful, because there, you know, there's a potential of families saying, well, what, what is the school doing telling me what to do with, with my guns? Of course, we all support responsible gun ownership and storage, but that's not the case across the board. So I, I would just like to see a little bit more about getting the purpose across, and having a very direct scope of the project, and then the delivery portion as well. Back to Kim's comments.
There is, the, the organization has a, has a website with all sorts of statistics and information available.
So procedurally, we could do a couple of things. One is we could take no action, and then it just goes. The other is someone could move to table it to the next, if they want to think about it a little bit more, and think about whether we want it on the next agenda, we could table it. Or the other option is we don't, and if it's appropriate to come up at another school committee meeting, we can certainly add it to the agenda. Again, I know that Dr. Collins has already had some conversations with our law enforcement and community members about, you know, community safety, but if we feel like that's sufficient, then...
I'm going to make a motion to move forward with it, with the, you know, with, with the understanding that the communication would be directly to the adults and via electronic or however you choose, newsletters, but that no literature goes home with a child.
I'll second that.
And to be clear about the motion, what I would just have you do is, you don't have to read the, I don't think you have to read the whole thing, I can, I think we can reference the document, but so we know what we're moving. Are you comfortable with that, Amy? And everybody's received a copy of that?
It was linked in the agenda, but it was posted.
If someone feels important that, let's Graham read the entire thing, we could do that. The other is we can reference it. You're the moving party, my friend.
Okay.
But you could just reference the document.
I'll, I'll, I'd like to make a motion to support the Be Smart Resolution as presented, and noting that communication between the superintendent and the parents would be electronic or however you chose, other than putting it in a student's hand to bring home to the families.
Should we go with seconding that? Okay. Any other comments?
I just want to reiterate that we're now asking the schools to create a new process of registration with all the families at the beginning of the year, where I presume they now will all have to read and sign an acknowledgement of this, which we do not ask them to do for any other issue under our purview, nor have we at any time for any of the challenges facing the school, at which point presumably we'll have to have a process to keep track of and make sure that everybody has in fact signed this. I will be voting no if that is, if the school committee...
No.
It's not a mandatory program.
This can be, and this can be adapted. My understanding is that a couple of neighboring school committees have adopted it, and they've made it, and they've made it their own. So if, if you would like to support it minus that piece, and you were willing to alter your motion, then I could certainly take that, could take that off.
I would not like to support it at all, because it's not something that the committee needs to authorize for you to do in the way you see fit. I just wanted to be clear on what we were in fact voting on right now.
I, I think that Orrin's suggestion of maybe not having to have people sign it, but making sure that it goes home would suffice.
Okay.
Do you want to see?
Now, this is the Be Smart resolution. So I'll make the motion to support the Be Smart resolution, understanding that all communication will be between the superintendent and the adult, and that the Lennox School District would not take part in the registration, annual registration piece, is simply to disseminate the information to the adults. Did I miss anything?
Did you say anything about the signature part?
I did, I saw it.
So that's the annual registration materials at school site with a signature acknowledging awareness of secure gun storage responsibilities?
That's the piece that's being struck.
Does everybody understand the motion?
Not really. So we're striking that it's going to be an...
Disseminate this information, but not requiring the annual registration.
The second, the second to the last paragraph on the backs, the way it prints out is a two-sided document, so on the backside, there's a section about annual registration materials with a signature.
It goes out with your first day packets, basically.
But no requirement that it come back with a signature.
Do we ask for signature on, on first day registration packets anyway, for any other reason, or do they just go out?
Authorization for information.
Now, this has to be electronically, it's not going to go out with the registration packet.
I just feel that Ellen Mitchell's registration packet does go out electronically.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
We should also clarify, if we want it in the student handbook, which would be explicitly for students to read, whereas I understand the intent now is for it not to be something given to students.
But it, no, no, I remember, it actually say that...
Parents' legal obligation to secure and store...
There's handbook, boost it up.
We don't have to give any of the, we don't have to give any of the stats, and then just, just reminding parents of their legal obligation to...
But not the student handbook.
This is the, this is the, this is the student handbook, to include a line about parents have a legal obligation regarding the secure storage of...
Can I, can I change my motion?
You can withdraw it, and then you can do a new one.
I, I'd like to withdraw my, my motion, and I would like to make a new motion to table this until we can get further information about some of the issues that have been addressed.
Is it possible to, I'll second that with a follow-up question. Is it possible to have a representative from our police department maybe just speak a little bit about, I know there, it's not exactly a partnership, but I'm just, I'm, I'm not a gun expert by any means, and to Orrin's point, this is something that we haven't discussed before, and hasn't been under our purview, so I would, I would be interested in hearing more.
The, the representatives from Be Smart are also very willing to come and give a presentation as well. I can certainly request from the chief if, if he or, or someone from the department would come and speak to this, or provide you with information.
I might have an in, I'll let you know.
So we have a motion to table, seconded. All those in favor?
I think she withdrew her motion, she didn't table it.
She withdrew a motion, and then she moved to table this issue.
Moved to table, I didn't.
So we can have further discussion.
I heard that was true, I didn't.
Sorry about that. So Kim withdrew her motion.
Yep. And then made a...
And then made a motion to table, seconded by Megan.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sometimes it's messy, but it's good. Thank you.
All right, no, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So next, we have a $10,340 grant donation to the middle and high school Alpine ski team for jackets from the IW Foundation, which, since it is a donation, would require a vote.
So we have a generous member of the community that is, that is connected or speaking on behalf of the foundation, through which we've requested funds, and they don't, they've agreed to donate this sum of money toward the purchase of jackets for our Alpine ski team.
Correct. And just to clarify, the foundation is out of Riverdale, New York.
Do we have any information about what this foundation is, and why they give large sums of money to schools to buy Alpine jackets?
They have, my understanding is that, that they have donated previously, and, but not in, not in this large an amount, but I think when they found out that the team was in need of jackets, they upped their, they had a very specific thing, they were a need, and, and they were looking to fill that need. They're not, they're not new to the school district, is my understanding, they've previously been donors.
Any other?
What's that?
Dr. Ames may have more info on...
Would you like to give us more information, Dr. Ames?
I'm happy to share all I have.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know specifics about the organization, have been communicating via email with Coach Knight. This is something we've done a few times. My understanding, it's a, the individual and the organization stems from the Bonnaroo Basin in Great Barrington, and several times she's reached out and offered to, through the coaches, fund the purchases of these jackets that they keep for several years. Some students pass them on to others years, and I know some students kept the jackets and wear them proudly to this day. My understanding is this is the third or fourth round of this, that we've been, that our team has enjoyed. It's all cordial carefully, but Greg Knight, who's been our Alpine ski coach for a long time now, is a liaison with this benefactor.
Thank you. That's great. Do I have a motion to approve the donation of funds for our Alpine ski team?
I will make a motion to accept the IW, IW Foundation donation to the Alpine ski team.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay.
All right. Yeah, the Principal Kelly is going to come off with the elementary budget presentation.
That's right, we get a chance to take our mindful breath. You use a moment while we're waiting to say that I was listening to NPR on the way to work this morning, and they were talking about schools, and I know that you're using some of these principles, and I'm on to school, of schools being very specific about how they're using mindfulness to engage students and to help them self-regulate, and I know that's not in your presentation tonight, but I always love hearing about how those techniques translate into student wellness. And at the high school, middle high school, I see signs in the restroom, talking about how do we... talking about how do we take a calming moment, which is good. It's a good place to do it. The signs all around. That's all of my editorial comment for today.
No, I don't, trust me, I'll be there.
I thought this was your dog.
No.
Oh, Melissa's dog, okay. Great dog.
Can you see, okay?
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Just get me out of the way again.
She's always such a stupid.
All right. I'll just turn the, okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I put up the Morris Elementary School mission statement because I think it's important for us to stay focused and be reminded what we're all here for every year. So Morris Elementary School is committed to providing a wide continuum of learning opportunities that value individuals maximize both skills and knowledge and enhance self-esteem and produce lifelong learners. I thought I would start the presentation with just reviewing my last few years with all of you and my requests for funding and how they've impacted students. So if you're familiar with Morris, we ROAR every day, which the R stands for, we rise to the challenge. So I, up there in the top is our 2019 MCAS data compared to 2023. And we are exceeding our meeting expectation as increases 2019. So that, and it's a new test. The test is a little bit more difficult. The next tier down, we have invested and redesigned our summer school programming. And in the spring, that is our grade two data for A reading and A math. You'll see spring and that is in A reading 82% in the spring and 88% in the spring for math. And then you can see in grade three, there was very little summer slide and actually an increase. So I'd also like to commend my staff. The people who teach the summer school are the educators at Morris and they know the students and we, for some students, just continue and reinforce the skills that they need. And lastly, you have approved the Amplify Science program. And you can see that we pretty much were in line with the state, except this last year we've increased 23 points. So again, this year I'm asking for the final installment of Amplify Science and to have that in kindergarten and first grade. Okay, second, we own our own actions. So Morris students support each other and the community. Our fourth grade students had a donation drive for the Elizabeth Freeman Center. And in the top corner, our first and fourth grade buddies gave a nice gift to our local service people for the holidays. Since I've been here, you graciously have approved two full-time school adjustment counselors and they meet with my behavior specialists. And together, we, they reinforce and help the social interactions and help navigate peer relationships and just anything our students need. So thank you very much for keeping that funded. And you can see in the bottom corner, that's one of my school adjustment counselors doing yoga with the students. And then lastly, students at Morris excel in so many areas. It's not uncommon to walk into a classroom and see students facilitate a lesson. Dr. Collins can speak to this. On Friday, we were doing a walkthrough. We walked into a classroom and the kids were like, we are the teachers. And they sat there and they explained to us on how, how they subtract and regroup. So I would just, we own our own actions, next slide. And we're always working together. Up at the top corner is our trendy Tiger Plaza, again managed by one of my school adjustment counselors. We have a donation of clothing and other supplies that families or students may need. This is great for students who, who might need something during the day. It helps them learn to make choices and lets them have that independent feeling. Right now, we are doing our winter benchmarking. The teachers at Morris work together with special education, staff, our Title I interventionists. And we're always looking at our data and making sure that we're providing targeted interventions to support all students. And lastly, you, we have had some professional learning experiences. Actually, twice last week, it was a very busy week at Morris. The first one is we had a professional, Leanne Nicholson, come in. She is an expert in the brain. And together, staff in different grade levels, we spent the day planning for some close reading activities. And then last year, I applied for a grant through the state to help coach us in our positive behavior interventions and supports. And that is my PBIS team on Thursday, planning, just making sure that we are rolling out that program with fidelity. And lastly, we respect ourselves and others. When I first came to Lenox, we have purchased Second Step for all classroom teachers that is done on a daily basis. We have our, yeah?
I know.
Okay.
I just want to get a record, trying to help.
We have our PBIS, which is the video that is playing right here.
There.
First of all, the, for the.
There's no sound.
No, it's paused.
It paused it. Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Rewind. Second Step lesson is the video. If we can play the video.
Now you're ready?
Yes.
But it's in the middle.
Can you restart it?
I can.
Okay.
What is that middle, Madalena? Is that Mark Madalena's?
Nine, second step.
Except the other kid.
Joining in.
It's Mark Madalena's, no.
Can I go ahead?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you. So part of Second Step is we teach, you know, empathy. Students practice, you know, joining in and, and learning how to be a good peer friendship. Along with that is our PBIS, our ROAR. And lastly, we have continued with our classroom buddies. And that is where an upper grade and a younger grade become buddies throughout the year. And it's just building those relationships throughout the building with all students. So now we get to the financial part. So this is the FY 2025 budget. This includes the addition of an assistant principal. That is with a reduction of the principal to help out and do some work over in the middle and high school. The majority of the budget is the contractual obligations for employees and substitutes. Again, asking for the rest of the Amplify Science so it can be consistent throughout the building. And when, three years ago, we purchased a three-year subscription for our math curriculum, which is now ended. So we are asking for funding to update our Bo math program. So part of the request is to update the Bo math curriculum. We need to do that. Then there is some small request I have put in to support the PBIS program. And then there was some curriculum software programs that were moved from the technology department over to the Morris budget. And then lastly, supplies and due to inflation. So that is basically our requests. Any questions so far? Because the next few slides are just graphs. Bill, would you like to reiterate the change in?
Sure, absolutely.
It doesn't matter.
So there are three, there are three needs that we're looking to, to satisfy with, with one FTE. And an FTE is a full-time person. So we'd be looking to take Principal Kelly from full-time to halftime at the Morris School and the other half of her time to be a curriculum assessment or instruction and assessment director. And right now, you saw all the fine work that she's doing with her team, pre-K to five. We'd be looking to bring that to pre-K to six and then pre-K to seven and then pre-K to eight and bring on a, an assistant principal. And this would be a one-time staff increase because in three years, when we'd be looking to take, after Principal Kelly had taken on sixth, seventh, and eighth, when we got to the point where she would become a full-time curriculum instruction and assessment director for pre-K through 12, at that point, we'd be taking the assistant principal at the elementary school. They would be coming, they would become the principal, but there'd be no further increase FTE. So this brings us in gradually, allows us to hire with intentionality of who the next principal would be. They would be under Principal Kelly's mentorship for those first three years. They would, they would, they would support the programs, understand all of that. It would be a really good succession plan when she stepped over to become the CIA person, the elementary principal become principal. And I will speak to the other two pieces of that when we discuss the district budget.
And you can, as you can see here, the majority of the budget is spent on the instructional for the, for the students. And here again, it's a graph just showing where we are in line with the budget from last year to this year. So pretty much everything is similar. Except for the administration's showing a 0.5 increase. And then just at Morris, we celebrate all of our accomplishments. So there's some fifth grade students counting up our ROAR tickets. There's a little kiddo in kindergarten who has just mastered writing his G. So we, we celebrate all our accomplishments. Any questions?
I still have a comment. That was a great presentation. I like all your, you really know how to do these PowerPoints and make them fun. Substance as well, but I'm just saying, it's really good. Love it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Brian Kelly, our Director of Student Services with the Special Education Budget Presentation.
Well, thanks for letting me present to you. Do you have the video, too? I don't have the video. It's one I prepared. No videos. But you can go to the next slide, right? Thanks for letting me present the FY 25 Student Service Budget to you tonight. First off, I just want to talk about quickly, just sort of the overview of what we encompass. So Student Services sort of houses a number of different departments underneath that, or services, Special Education Services, which is pre-K all the way up to age 22 for some students. 504 is under Student Services. The Services for English Language Learners falls under us as well as any students who fall under homelessness. So those are the several categories that sort of just are housed under us. These are all of our students. Again, so, so a wide range of kids that we do serve. So just to talk a little bit about the different services, we have some of the youngest kids in our pre-K. Some of those students are coming in at age three, starting with us. And then we have students all the way, again, all the way up to age 22. In some cases, when students need services beyond the age of 18, depending on what types of needs those students have. We do have Special Education Services that are delivered mostly in the general education environment, so in the classroom a lot of those. Or sometimes those are delivered in an alternative location for some intervention. There's a pull-out service. We have related services that are delivered under Special Education, which could be occupational therapy, speech therapy, physical therapy, SAC services, which is school adjustment counseling services. All of those types of things could be delivered as well for students who need those. The 504 services, like I said, so anybody who has a disability that impacts a major life area and is, impacts them in school, it can be under other places too. For us, in the school environment, if it impacts them there, then they have a right to have accommodations or modifications and it's a little bit different than special ed and that they're not getting specially designed instruction pulled out and they don't have goals and benchmarks. We also deliver the transitional services, like I said, for students who are age 22. So those might be job coaching, could be day hab and getting ready for transitional living outside of school when they get beyond 22. And those are the types of services that we offer students. Okay, so this, I, I put this in the packet all the time and this is really just outlining Special Education IDPA, really is what's, you know, the federal law that governs the delivery of Special Education. And that's just really sort of outlines how, you know, our obligation, it's mandates that we make a pretty appropriate public education to eligible children with disabilities. So whenever we, we have an obligation to, let's call child find if we think somebody is not making up to progress and is suspected of disability, we have an obligation to evaluate students.
Next one?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is just the trends in eligibility. So you can see here, this is just from, I've taken some data back from 2013, 14, all the way to 23, 24. And this is just the number of kids on the left column and then the percentage for the population. So I think we're running enrollment is somewhere around 785 students or somewhere in that ballpark. And so out of those students, 91 students are identified with Special Education needs, which is 11.6%. So it's gone a little bit over the years, but not tremendously. The state average is hovering somewhere around 19%. So we're sort of, we're probably a little under, you know, 15, 14, 15 would probably be somewhere in the middle there. 19 is sort of that level on the higher end, but that's the state average currently.
Brian, is that IEPs and 504?
So 504, students on 504s, we have about 70 super substudents on 504 plans.
Okay, so this is just IEPs?
Just IEPs, yeah.
And is there, given that it's like up 30% in the last three years, is that a particular, is that just sort of who's coming in? Is that a particular type of service?
I think it's a, it's a little bit of those, maybe. I think it's, you know, it's, it's a little bit fluid. Oftentimes, the types of disabilities students need help for, you know, if that's why they are identified, because their disability is going to impact them and it's not a shorter term. Otherwise, kids go on other plans that aren't special ed. It's a different threshold. So if you have a special ed plan, oftentimes you're needing that support much longer, which is why you probably see increases and you don't see the decrease as much because by the time somebody comes off a plan, somebody's already refilled their spot. You know, so then there are additional needs that will come in over time. But it's hard to really map what that particular trend is that they're just kids with, you know, we have seen a rise in students with not verbal learning disorders and autism. So there are certain disabilities that have become a little bit more prevalent, more health-related disorders. Learning disorders, I think, you know, specifically. Learning disorders, I think, you know, specifically, these orders are staying pretty stable. Some of them are more in the health, they're emotional, probably increased. Thanks. So, this is a quick overview of our, of the FY25 budget and the comparison. So, we've had, as you can see, with the salaries, is, is, there's an increase in the salaries each fiscal year.
And that's with the level FTEs, there's no new positions.
No new positions. Transportation, we have a decrease, and we'll talk about that a little bit, you know, in relation to actually the next bucket, which is beneath that, which is the shift in needs for some tuition. So, I'm going to give a little bit of an explanation around some of the tuition needs. And then our software, I'll talk a little bit as well, the highlights about our shift to Power School for special education programming, will be in line with our Power School information system. And also, we just moved some money from another line in the tech budget, in our operating, you know, operating budget line to software, so it's just a move. And then other programs costs, you can see, are $5,000, something here, $26. This is just a breakdown from FY24, final budget 25, and then the variance there, with the increases and decreases on the rating side. And again, you can see, like, much like the schools, which is a good thing to see, is most of the money, 50% of it, is being spent for the instructional purposes, not a full and therapeutic. And other district is the next highest portion on the, on the pie graph. Okay, so the highlights. So, we are making this, there's a new IEP, and I'll be sending some letters out as we move towards the spring, so people might be aware that that's on the horizon. So, it's been a long time since the, the IEP has been actually looked at and edited. So, it's about 20 years. I did a training, and they put a bunch of different things on the board, and one was the book, the Da Vinci Code, and one was the Nokia, the phone, and then one was the IEP. They said, "We're all these things." They said, "They're all pretty old, right, and they need a revamp." But the reasoning for the new IEP is not just to get another document, or to revise a document, but it was really a way to sort of like look at, how are we doing the process? How are we providing the services? You know, it's giving us a chance to really look at it with a fresh lens, and sort of take a look at our practices, and how we're engaging parents, and how we're looking at student goal and vision. So, it's, it's not just a form change, but I think it's, you know, urging us to sort of look also again at our practices. So, to go in line with that, currently, we use eSPED to sort of house all of our, our IDPs and all the documents. Everything that we do to generate an IEP is done through that. All of our data is sort of stored there. And currently, the, the system has always been, even when there was Redeker and that, or now Power School and that, is you're double-entering information all the time, so you're between two systems. So, you know, I'll talk a little bit about that when I get to the next slide. Out-of-district programming is a place I'm going to want to talk about a little bit, where we've had some shift in some needs. Then we've had some need for a little bit of improvements and additions in curriculum for not only our step program, but also some, some items for our English language learners, and just with some of the work that we're doing for professional development. So, the Power School Special Programs, we've entered into a contract with Power School to, work to convert over to Power School Special Programs by March, hopefully. So, we've already started those meetings to try to roll that out. And then we'll officially go online with that, starting for the fall. And that's sort of the place of, of using our eSPED system now. And it's, the, the reasons to do that are, I've sort of bullet, bulleted them up here. It supports the new IEP. They were the place, when I did the research, that really already has this loaded and ready to go. I was sort of getting nervous about who's going to have all this with this conversion, who's going to have the forms and everything really ready and solid, and Power School was at the top. And I didn't, I didn't feel like we're going to have, run into a big jam-up when we get into the fall and have to do all this conversion. And then next, it's, you know, connected directly to the information system, so it's going to really cut down on work. So, right now, you know, if you have a student already sitting in Power School, and you want to activate them because a referral came in, you, you've already got the demographic information, you don't have to double-enter information, and that sort of also resolve all those things, if there are problems with one or another, for a lot of state reporting. For the special ed, 504 and ELL will all be covered. So, currently, in our system right now, we have 504, and special ed services are all in eSPED. We have some growing needs in our English Language Learner Department, and we really wanted to make sure we could capture that and get the data, and be able to manipulate that in a way that's useful and effective for folks. And so, we've also decided to put that under there, and provide staff with one place to collaborate and access information. So, right now, eSPED's not fantastic, after I've been here, like, this middle of my second year, like, sort of being teacher-friendly, too. This, when stu, when teachers are already in their Power School classroom, and they have their roster, they can go on any student, there's alerts for things, we can get them the access that we want them to have, they can easily click on, and they get right into special programs, they access the documents, can interact with those. It's much more fluid and easy. And it's also much better as far as engaging parents and guardians with, you know, some convenient web-based access to the forums as well. So, there's a one tap, right now, we're already working with grants. I got a 274 grant that paid for a bulk of some of the startup fee, because this year, we're already using, like, some money from Circuit Breaker and some of that to sort of cover the, you know, the one-time implementation. So, really, what you're going to end up seeing is, there's the cost of Power School Special Programs is a little bit more than an eSPED each year. So, instead of like $4,000, it's $6,000 something dollars for the yearly fee. So, out-of-district placements. You don't really get to talk about this often, but they are a reality. We want all students here in Lenox to be successful in their, in their academic and social life. When we can't meet those needs with our programs here in-house, usually, we've tried a number of different things and different programs locally. Sometimes, we have to move to what's called an out-of-district placement, and there are several types. Either a private or public day placement, so that's just a day. Sometimes, we'll transport a student somewhere, they sort of, they're still at home, they go, they get a, either one of our buses, van, some other way, get to the school, and are transported back. Residential schools are, they're 24/7. Somebody needs much more intensive care, they might end up. And then collaboratives is, is the last thing. We don't have collaboratives directly around here, but some places have collaboratives they work with, and they form relationships and are able to support school systems. So, when are students typically referred? If the program, so sometimes we get kids in, in a district where we just, we don't have a program per the certain need that the student has, right? So, sometimes, especially in a small district, you might have a student that has a specific need, you try to think about what the programming is, try to put that together, and so placement is always the last thing you talk about for a student, and in the IEP process, and usually, they talk about all services, and then where is it going to happen? So, sometimes, we, we just don't have that specific program. If the child's not making adequate progress in in-district program, so we've already had them in a in-district program, and we've come to a lot of different meetings, we've reviewed data, they're not making progress effectively. If they're also, you know, not getting what's called the free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. So, our first mandate is always to try to keep a student in what's called least restrictive. So, you know, if they want to have access to their typical peers, you know, in an environment that allows them to enjoy their social life in a way, and their academic life, without as many restrictions. Sometimes, we are not able to do that after some attempts. The student's medical or behavioral needs can only be met in a specialized program, and the team decision's based on evaluation data and input from all members of that team. So, that's why, so for, to reflect back on some of those numbers, we had a shift in some of those needs, so we have some students that we've made best efforts to try to educate, and they're not making it with the support and the programming we have in district. And so, we have some students that we've had to place in either out-of-district or they're out-of-day placement. It's a small number of kids, relatively speaking, but some, some of those costs are a little bit higher. We do have things offset that, and at the end of the year, we are able to claim for Circuit Breaker, and what's called a relief, or extraordinary relief, and I'm working on those all the time, starting in late winter, spring. And that's when you go over a certain threshold of money spent in your district for the costs that are, go above and beyond. Additions in our, what's called our transition program, they do a fantastic job, but most of the students there are some of our students with, who have really intensive needs, and some of those students are transitioning out, and maybe 18, 19, 20, 21. And so, we've had an increase in need for what's called a basic math class, that we just haven't been able to sort of put together, and try to like figure out where do kids fall when they can't really do algebra or geometry, but they're not doing different maths. So, we have an increasing need for that. The current teacher, Ms. Cuthbertson, is working really diligently around that, and she collaborates a lot, Mary Cherry, who does a really nice job in math. And so, there's a lot of overlap, and they really need some more specially-designed instruction and numeracy. And then, we're looking for also funding, for the self-determination curriculum for transition planning. And so, we're, that's in line with the new IEP as well, around setting goals and visions for students. They have a lot more say in what they're doing for their future and their transitions. So, that's where the increase was for that. We also have some job coaching and day hab placements for students. And so, we always work with Berkshire County ARC, and then we do some contracting with them that accounts for some of that cost. For English Language Learners, we have had an increase in some of the students who are identified as English Language Learners. At the middle high school, currently, we are short on textbooks and work, workbooks for the Level 2, Level 3, and Level 4. We really want to have some consistency also between the schools and the curriculums that we're using. Keystone is by Pearson, and that's consistent with Cornerstone, it's used at Morris. So, that's what we're looking to add for that. The acquisition would bring us up to a complete set of textbooks and workbooks for students at all levels. We've also added what's called Language Link as a secondary means for interpretation. So, we have, we contract out for interpretation and translation with Medioma, and that's Camille Bermudez's company, and they do the bulk of our work for interpretation and translation services. But when we have an emergency, we can't get somebody, this is a phone service that we're able to dial right into and get access to over 300 different languages. And just, I just wanted to highlight that we're still doing ongoing PD for last year. We, we're looking for that increase in a paraprofessional, so that we could start some co-teaching in a kindergarten inclusion classroom, which is, is quite great for our kindergarten kiddos. And so, we're doing ongoing PD to get people up to speed on co-teaching and to support them in that work. And then we're also doing PD ongoing for the conversion for the rest of this year to Power School Special Programs and the new IEP. Should be it. Any questions?
Questions?
I'm going to type you here for Melissa, but particularly, you mentioned the same FTEs, particularly in the instructional section, some of the line items with the same number of FTEs, you can't, like, service for elementary service. Well, that in particular, even though it suggests plus new FTEs, and the dollar amounts, like, one of them is an additional 50K variance. Is there more hours for existing FTEs, or do you know what's going on there?
What line are you looking at? Did you just?
Instruction, Service, Support Elementary.
So, is the secondary lower?
Yes.
There's always a movement between the two. And if we budget in one, and the position ends up in the other, that, sometimes you'll see that back and forth go on.
Okay, because secondary is going up also. So, combined, they're going for about 65K.
I'll have to take a look at it.
We can, I can follow you around.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
So, paraprofessional?
We didn't add anybody this year.
Would it be the difference between contracted versus our year to year?
No, no, no. There's got to be something in there that I didn't.
Okay, yeah, I ask, because in the margin, it says plus 1.0 new, in a couple places. Anyway, I'll, I'll, my other question was just on the SACs. It seems like one of them is in the Morris budget, but then one of the elementary ones is here, and then the high school ones are here. Is that right?
So, there's, so the Morris budget has a guidance, which falls under Morris, but that position really is being utilized as a school adjustment counselor. So, that, and I report that as such, as a special ed cost at the end of the year. So, that could move into special ed from Morris, but that's just the, the way it was made up, and I've left it there. We can certainly clean that up.
No, that makes sense. Okay.
The, the only comment I'd like to make is that I don't think that students could have a better advocate than, than Mr. Kelly, while simultaneously, he's a really, been a really judicious steward of district funds, and does an awful lot of research when he's looking at other programs or out-of-district placements, looks at, looks at cost, and balances it nicely with what is in the best interest of students. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Brandon, we'll deliver the technology.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. One of the things that we did last year was, it was a very large budget increase for a lot of things that this district certainly needed to, to move forward. So, I just wanted to go over some of those great things that you were able to fund last year, because I think it's very important to know, you know, where the taxpayer money has gone. So, one of the things that was brought up last year by Dr. Ames was a program that enabled us to track student hall passes. So, before, it would just be a piece of paper, the student would go out, you have no idea when they came back. With this new system, where you actually do everything electronically now, so a teacher will write a pass for a student in the system, the other person will get an alert on their computer, letting them know that their student is coming. They can also put in there that they aren't available to see them at that time, so it'll reject the pass. We could also say that only, let's say, only 10 students can be out at a time, or if three students are going to the same bathroom at the same time, it can limit that kind of stuff. So, it's really a great piece of software that we were, we were able to implement actually at both schools, and I think it's been very successful so far. And even with, when teachers would have a meeting with a parent, they can say, "Well, your students missed, you know, whatever amount of time, they're going to the bathroom an awful lot, maybe there's something we need to look into." So, that was one system that we implemented last year. We were able to increase our internet connection up to 5G. We had one, one gigabyte last year. We have all-new wireless access points. Those, the ones that were replaced were about 10 years old, and we had no support on them. So, we were receiving calls daily on our wireless when things weren't working, and so we had to go unplug them and plug them back in. It was quite a bit of work to get all these new ones in, but they've been rock-solid so far. So, our, our new wireless within the schools has really been great. We replaced our, what was called our core network switches, which pretty much runs everything, about a year and a half ago, when we were doing MCAS testing. Our switches actually went down during MCAS testing. I was able to get it back up and running quickly, but we don't want that to happen ever again. So, those two new switches will certainly help with that. We also installed TVs in the assistant principal's office. The principal's offices at all schools for monitoring the camera system. So, at any time, if they were in their office and they needed to pull up the cameras, they could do that right on their big screen. So, that's been very helpful. We installed new. We installed new projector setup. So what that really means is if you ever walked into any of the rooms in the classrooms, you would see wires coming down the wall and speaker wires and all this mess. And each year I would have to go and disassemble all that stuff and then have our custodians to take out the computers and all of that. And all the connections were different. So we'd need different adapters and we needed all this different stuff and it just looked bad to me. I have a little bit of ADHD when it comes to things looking nice. And so when things don't look nice, it bothers me. So now there's a single wire mold coming down the wall with a single HDMI jack. And so when we remove things this year, it's one, one little plug. And we also installed a bunch of speakers within the ceiling. So there's no speaker sitting on a teacher's desk anymore either. It's all right in the actual ceilings. And we're looking to probably do more at Morris. I think Morris right now only has six classrooms that have that, but we would like to increase that as well. A new fob entry system for both schools. Now, as we know, before there was keys and sometimes regular keys were never handed back throughout the 25 years. So now we have an electronic fob system that will enable us if a teacher leaves, we can turn it off and they won't be able to get into the building. We also have schedules, so people can only get into the building at certain times. And we also have the ability to say, you know, when did Randy come into the building that day? You just bring it up and there it is. So that was a very, very large project, but I think it was definitely worth it. And it's, it's really, it's been great for us so far. The new website, the second new iteration of the website. I was, I gotta admit, I was against this because I did not want to have to go through yet another large conversion. But Mr. Collins talked me into it and I gotta say with Amy's help, Amy really took it over and helped out quite a bit with the whole migration piece and meeting with people and, you know, because that was my biggest thing from the last year when I tried to do this. You know, meeting with everybody, trying to see what they wanted, it was all me and as you know, it's just me, right? And so that was too much on my plate. So I have to say, I mean, if you've seen it, I think it looks fantastic. The app is, is just great. We got notification today, we had over 750 people download the app on their phone, just on iPhones and what was it, 100?
Fifty-one.
151 on Android devices. So, you know, that's, we're looking at almost a thousand people that have downloaded our app, which is fantastic. So the word's really getting out there. The peer storage is just something that's on the backend, not really exciting for any of you guys, but it definitely is something that we, we did need. We're switching over to a new internet content filter, which, you know, sounds kind of boring, but at the same time, this new system that we're putting in, let's just say I'm a student and I'm looking up some guns or something like that. A notification can be sent immediately to the principals or to guidance counselor or whoever we want to set that up in. And we have a track, we have a record of everything that the student did for that day. So if a teacher said, well, I think they went to this website or that website, I can type in the student's name and it shows me the journey that he's done or she's done. So that to me is huge or if a parent has a concern. The other day I had a parent that said, you know, my child is getting on TikTok, right? They're getting on TikTok and they're looking at like all the time, like they're not, they're nonstop. And so this was like the first time that I had to do it with our new content filter to block TikTok. And so when I called the company up and I asked them, you know, how do you do that? Can you just take a look? And they said, yeah, no problem. And the guy was like, this is really, this is scary. I'm like, what's that? He goes, in the last two weeks, this student watched over 100,000 TikTok videos. And so that's where I was like, okay, I guess this really is an urgent issue. And with one click, I hit TikTok and TikTok was blocked on that student's Chromebook. And that will enable us even to go further with maybe I had another parent that didn't want any social media on their device at all. Type in social media, put in that student and now it's social stuff and they don't have anything that they can't get to that, at least on their Chromebook. I of course can't block that on, you know, their personal device, but at least if it's one of our devices, I'm able to block it and not only within the schools, but I can also block it at home. So if that's something that they want, we can, we can actually do that now where we couldn't really do that easily before. So it's really great.
I have a quick question. Do you want to wait until the end for questions?
Nope.
Okay. So you're, you're speaking about the Chromebooks that are school property, right? So are, I would hope that we're kind of banning or eliminating any form of social media from those Chromebooks is right off the bat. Is that not happening?
When they're in school, I do that 100%, but it's always a debate, right? It's like, should we be responsible for a device that goes home? You can say yes, because it's our device, right? But then if we block it, they just get on another device. So there's just this, you know, kind of back and forth of what, you know, we should really do. When I was in Pittsburgh, I always thought, well, we shouldn't be doing that. I don't want to get involved in that. But now it seems to have turned a little bit and I feel like yes, we should be blocking all of that stuff. But how much social media do you block? Like you start to block Facebook, knowing that social media is a big umbrella. So you block everything on social media, you know? It's a tough, it's a tough question and I don't, I don't really have a great answer for that because I think everybody is different. I only have one parent that says, I want my son to be or my daughter to be able to get on that stuff. So it's, it's tough.
I'll just quickly say, because it could be, certainly would be appropriate for another conversation, another time, we can see if that's one of our items. But I do know from meeting with our, our middle and high school, Ms. McNeese, they, and a lot of students, they actually, part of their career stuff is social media, marketing, et cetera. So I think some of what the middle and high school is doing is obviously is focusing on responsible use of these items and also students are using them to poll each other or to advertise events or to, you know, this is the ways in which many, many businesses and entities and social organizations are advertising what they're doing. So I think that there's that balance, but for another time, but I do know that some of the teachers are using it in, as saying, this is how we appropriately use these items for.
Yeah, and the thing that comes up all the time is, you know, I'll, so a teacher might ask me to block something and then I'll block it and then, you know, 20 minutes later I'll have another teacher saying, why did you block this? I'm using this for my curriculum, you know? So it's, it's tough to know exactly and to have 100% of people saying, yes, I want that blocked or, you know, only 70% or whatever. Because social media does, there is good things, you know, that could be on social media, so you just block it all. It's, it is difficult. And I don't like social media. I think when my son has social media, he's not as a good human being sometimes. He tends to get in trouble on it, so I don't allow him to have it. But again, that's different for every single parent. But it is great that we're able to just kind of monitor that stuff a little bit more than we couldn't do before. And as Brian mentioned, Power School Special Services. This to me has always been a big one because when a teacher has Power School open, right? Before if a student was on IP, they might have to, I don't know, not remember it, but they might have a packet or something that the teacher would have and then, but it's not readily available. So now with Power School, they look up the student and portions of the IP that they have access to or they are able to see is right at their fingertips. Or if it's a 504, an accommodation, they know right away that the student, there's an icon right in Power School that says, oh, 504. Oh, okay, let me take a look at that. So it's kind of like, it's one of those things where, you know, out of sight, out of mind. Now it's right in front of them at all times. So I think that's going to be a huge success moving forward. And so here's our small increase and the increases are really just our normal salary increases. We, last year I went out for a help desk person and that didn't get approved, but I'm actually glad it didn't because we were able to fund a third party company. And the nice thing about that is number one, we don't have to pay for insurance and sick time and all that stuff, right? And I didn't hire a person though, I hired a whole company. So it doesn't matter if I need someone to come and help me roll something out or someone to come help me do some kind of major work. I now can have a bunch of different people that I can pull from, of course at a different rate, but at least it's been the best thing that we could have done. So I actually appreciate the conversation that we had last year and I'm glad that we went that route because I think it was, it was the way to go and it's been fantastic. The company that we currently have actually just got bought out by another larger company within Pittsburgh. So actually now I have even a larger pool of resources to pull from, including security experts, including engineers, including really anybody that I want to choose from. So, you know, I really appreciate that conversation from last year because it helps. We did move, last year we had point two, a tech support salary and that is now moved to instructional drama. So we don't have that person anymore. And, you know, unfortunately, software increases every single year. So that's part of our increase for just our regular licenses. We did move some of the software to department levels, so it wasn't coming from a technology budget. Moved it into curriculum. And there is three new pieces of software that we currently are in the process of looking at and purchased some of them. Electronic forms was a big one. Right now the paper trail is just, it keeps on getting bigger and bigger and there's no kind of record really that you'll have to find in a drawer somewhere and it's just not that accurate. So we did move forward with clever forms and originally even Dr. Collins asked me about this, he said, oh, well, let's look at clever forms. And I, we have another program called clever that we use in the schools. It's not that, so it's a, it's a different provider of software. And of course the new website and we are looking into document storage too. We have another meeting to kind of go over that. And what that would be is we're kind of looking to try to take all of this paper trail that we have here and get that scan into a system that's easily accessible. It's, it's a lot of work sometimes when someone calls up for something, maybe your retirement record or whatever, and they have to find all that documentation in all these different drawers. So we're kind of looking at a way to possibly streamline all the paper work that we have. And we do this every year. Every year we purchase new Chromebooks for sixth and ninth graders. And now this year we do need new copiers. The copiers are about 10 years old, most of them have about 10 million copies on them and they are getting repaired all the time. And the software that's on here is, it's called Paper Cut. And what Paper Cut enables you to do is really track how much printing is actually done on those devices. You could set limits. You could say if you're printing out more than 100 copies of something, you make sure that it's double sided, like it'll show bill notes to say, hey, are you sure you don't want to double side this? And then someone could say, oh yeah, I do. And it's kind of like a cost savings. And the nice thing about that too is if, when I print, I print to basically a virtual printer and I can use my fob now in the future to go to any one of the copiers and put my fob on there and it will release my job. So sometimes people go and print something and they never want it. They want it, they think they want it and then they just go and never pick it up. So now when we print, it just stores it in the queue to them when somebody wants to actually do it. And it's, you know, if you're printing out something for special ed and you don't want that to be seen or whatever it is, now it's you going to the copier and scanning your thing in and then releasing the job. So it's a cost savings over the years, but we do need new copies just in general. But with that, we'll also have the ability to have that little barcode scanner, which is the same fob that we use for the doors, the same system. And it's really cool too because you can actually, if you had more copiers, let's say you had, had a school system that had like 10 copiers, you're not printing to copier one, two, three, four, five or six, you're printing to kind of like this big virtual printer and then you can go to wherever. So if someone's using the copier that you're currently like printed to originally, you have to wait for them, but now you can just print to that one and then you just go to either one of the copiers currently. So that's that.
Okay, Randy. I would have assumed we had been, we leased copiers, or they always bought or do schools always buy?
No. The history is Lennox has always purchased, other districts purchase, other districts lease. Purchasing and leasing are both on the state contract. So there are some variations with services after the purchase or lease. But because Lennox has always been in a purchasing cycle, it's sort of remained. We can look at leasing and get it out of capital and then it would add to the operating.
Being capital is great.
I was just gonna say, don't do that.
And one other question, it feels like, sort of, I feel like we've had these Chromebook renewal cycles, but there's always been this or that grant that covers it or will that be there this year as well or are those going?
That was the ECF grant and that is no longer available. That was, I think, during COVID and they ran it one extra year last year, but we didn't get approved for it because too many people used up all night.
Okay. And so what is our renewal, what is our envisioned renewal cycle is it? Because I think at this point we have, we aim to own a Chromebook for every student throughout, right?
Yeah, we, when we get, so what I usually do is I of course take back all the senior Chromebooks and then we take back the eighth grade Chromebooks. Now 75% of them can be reused. Some of them need a little bit of tender love and care to get them going again. But we do, we'll sometimes put those into the elementary school. And Chromebooks have about, I mean, if they're used properly, they have about a five-year lifecycle if they're used properly. So, so far that's been really good for us. And I just, it would be nice if I could take all the senior ones and give it back to the sixth graders, but we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet.
And do we have a Chromebooks gone missing or broken problem?
Missing, not so much. Broken, yeah, I would say, I wouldn't say it's a problem as big as other school districts. But we have thought about going to carts, at least in the sixth through eighth grade. But the problem is you go with carts, now you can't really give any homework that's, you know, electronically based or campus, whatever the program that they're using.
You can, right? I mean, like 20 years ago, I had assignments that I had to do electronically based and there was no.
I mean, that's just from, I mean, I know Pittsburgh had to do that where they stopped giving homework because, at least on electronic wise, because you're, you can't be sure that a student has a device at home that they can use.
But we could provide them if needed. I just, I don't know what the hollow, but I assume there's no law prohibiting us from providing Chromebooks as needed as opposed to handing one to everybody. Unless that's wrong.
Most districts do use a renewal cycle. And just so that you don't have the, you know, we always talk about the downs of the budget, so that you don't have one year where you need 50,000 and then the next year you don't. But then two years later, you need another 50 in the next year. So the renewal cycle keeps good Chromebooks in the hands of the kids and the renewal cycle, we wouldn't have extras sitting on a shelf with this. And because of, we have to get rid of some and then we can remove their lives when we get them back.
And so roughly speaking, the idea is we need, we have 750 in circulation and we're buying 250 a year.
And, you know, when the sixth graders get them, you definitely want to have a new device that they need to do in the school because at Morris right now, we only have, they have carts. But the interesting thing about the carts is that they are, I don't have any damage at all. And we did implement a new policy last year where we do give one if a student does break them, physical damage. But the second one, we tell the parent that it's either $250 to replace or they can bring in their own if they wanted to go that route. But the problem is when they start bringing in their own, one, there's no monitoring, right? You can't really do anything monitoring wise on them because it's their own device. And for MCAS testing, they have to use it both. So now we're scrambling around trying to find devices for kids that didn't bring them in and then, or they had a broken device. So it's definitely lowered the amount of damage, but at least we're getting some return back if a parent says, oh, I understand, you know, here's $250 for replacement. So, you know, that has happened a couple of times. And we do keep a good record of how many they actually, you know, have damaged. I mean, I've seen some that looked like they were thrown from the higher school. And so it's interesting because you ask a child, what happened? It's in my bag. So there's never, they don't really like to tell you the truth. And of course they've got our breakdown here.
And then this is just a similar pie chart to the other, similar to the other departments' programs. And you can see that personnel is 41% of the total budget. The next biggest is software, hardware, network maintenance, and then the contracted services of 30,000. That's. That is the, helps Randy when, or that department, when they need an extra hand to complete tasks. And we think that that's a good level. We don't think that we'll need more until we get a trend, and then we could see if we can actually lower it, or if we need to increase it. But this will be, this will only be a year, too.
That's right. Yeah, and we have a lot of big projects that I'm trying to do to hopefully get done before the summer. So, in the future, too, there, I mean, it really, you know, security is a huge, you know, not just physical security, but, you know, the cybersecurity is becoming a very big thing now. And, you know, I'd be going to a bunch of security conferences, and it's not, you know, if you're gonna get hacked, it's really when you're gonna get hacked. So I am trying to do everything that I can to mitigate those kind of issues. But you never know, you know, it's, one person clicks on something that they shouldn't, and, you know, now you're impacted. But, you know, so far, so good, but you never, you never know. It's scary. It's very scary for a technology director, especially when, you know, it's just you kind of managing that stuff if anything terrible happens. You know, it's a pit in your stomach kind of thing, like, "Oh my, what's happening?" You know, anytime something happens. So, we do want to make sure that security is a big thing that we're focusing on throughout the years, because it's only gonna get worse.
Do we keep a full, respectable backup?
Yeah, so, and the problem that you encounter is, when do you test all those restores? You know, but yeah, we have a program called Beam that does all of our backups. And what I've been trying to push people to is Google Drive. So, when COVID happened, everyone's documents were stored in the school, and there's a server in the school. Now, I don't want to have that responsibility again of having to have that server up all the time, where if we just saved all their stuff to Google, they could get to it from anywhere on any device. They don't have to log into the school system, they don't have to VPN in, and they don't have to do all that, because that is one that could be, could be impacted at some point, would be a server like that. So I am trying to get everybody to move to Google Drive. And most, most people are fine with it, but then they, they think that, "Oh, I don't want to convert to Google Docs." And I'm like, "No, you don't have to do that, you still have Word, it's just, it's just where you're saving stuff." So, they have to kind of get into that mentality of, no, it's, you're not, you're not migrating all your stuff over, you're just putting it into a different folder on the web so you can have access to it.
And I can attest, it's a mentality.
Yeah, yeah.
It has not been easy.
It's, it's different, right? But I mean, it's been 15 years where, you know, this, this school system has been doing the same thing for a while. And I just, I care about people's data, so I don't want their data to be impacted, where if, if something happened tomorrow to that server, whatever happens to it, not even a cybersecurity attack, but something just goes down, and then my backup server, something was wrong with that, well, now let Google worry about that stuff. It's like, I don't want to have those responsibilities anymore because it's just too much to let somebody else manage and do those kind of things. So, yeah.
Thank you.
My biggest concern is her server in there for the budget stuff. That's my, that's my sickness every single day, you know? I can, people losing a couple of documents is one thing, but that system, I really can't lose.
It'll be awesome.
It's backed up four times.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
If we could look at the projects that Randy has taken on since he's been here, and where the district was with technology and where it is, it's, it's, I would have, I would have guessed that the three tech directors wouldn't have been able to accomplish what he's accomplished. He has an incredible work ethic, and really, the district gets its money's worth and then some.
Thank you.
All right, next is Melissa and me with District Administration and Operations.
I can go.
All right.
So, we wanted to give a overview of what the central administration is comprised of. We have the superintendent, assistant superintendent, business and operations, executive assistant to the superintendent, and an accounting assistant, and then the new position, which is the principal dropping to .5, and .5 coming into central admin as curriculum instruction and assessment. So the FY 2024 budget total was 851, 645. The initial budget for this year is 961, 018. And that includes about $45,000 of salary moving over, and then there needs to be a budget for the new position, and that's about $35,000, with $25,000 allocated to professional development at a central admin level, and $10,000 for materials and supplies. So the bulk of the increase, you know, there's salary increases for existing personnel, and there's, you know, software increases that are in, like the accounting software that, that we utilize. So there's some increases there, but that's the bulk of the increase in the budget, is the, the change to the curriculum and having that added in. This is a line-by-line, really, increase or reduction areas. So, part of the central administration is the school committee administration, and they're showing a 4,300 increase. And that's due to, we have a good number go to the annual conference, and we want that to continue, so we had to increase it. We're also going to be offering Education Week subscriptions to school committee members next year, and that's part of that increase. The salaries, again, the bulk of it is the movement of a .5 curriculum and instruction. And professional development includes a decrease in tuition reimbursement in the superintendent's line, and then an increase for the centralized professional development and materials. Other costs are software increases, and then again, the materials for the new .5. Transportation is included in this, and that is, we're entering year three. We will only see a 2.5% increase this year. Next year is the fourth year, and that's when we go to 4%. So in next year's budget, you'll see a 4% increase. But with that, we have a newer van versus an older bus, so we've seen a reduction in fuel and maintenance accounts for our own owned vehicles.
So, we discussed, we discussed this during Principal Kelly's presentation, the added value of the curriculum instruction and assessment person adding curriculum and student support. The, just to reiterate, the elementary principal, the position would go from full-time to half-time, with the other half coming into the district administration as a curriculum instruction and assessment person, with, starting right now, Principal Kelly does this in pre-K to 5. Next year, we'd be looking at pre-K to 6, and then pre-K to 7, and the following year, pre-K to 8. Nothing saying that we couldn't, that we couldn't advance this if we found ourselves in a position to do it, but right now, that's the plan. And then in year four, we would look to have her become a full-time, pick up the high school, 9, 10, 11, and 12 grades, and become a full-time curriculum instruction and assessment She does an outstanding job right now of pre-K to 5, so I, I feel that this is, we've got in-house the ideal person to, to take this on and, and bring this alignment and assessment coordination, looking at everything from benchmark testing to what curriculum materials we use, and, and aligning our professional development oversight.
There's a chart showing the breakout of expenses for central admin, and you can see personnel 55. Next highest is the transportation. We have four buses on the road every day. We have a fifth bus that does a run from Morris to the community center, but that's paid for by the town. So, there's four buses that the school district pays for daily transportation of students. Supplies, 7% professional development for, and then the school committee section is just a 5%.
And Melissa, has that been, do we have the fifth bus sort of locked in and good to go for the foreseeable future?
Yes, I believe so. I talked to-
Foreseeable being the key word in that?
Yes, I had a conversation with Chris, and he was allocating funding for next year out of the town budget for it. And it does, it helps with-
Our buses are in earlier, I guess.
It helps with getting the students home-
Yeah.
-at a better time, because that stop is eliminated from the regular runs, and then we just have a bus that comes and breaks. And it's worked out well. It's been going since after Thanksgiving, I think, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's been working well.
The, and the ancillary benefit is that if students are getting home earlier, 15 to 20 minutes shorter bus run, then parents will be less inclined to come to pick them up, which will reduce traffic on Western.
They're not crowded. The other buses are not crowded.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's it for the central admin administration. Do you have any questions on these slides? So on to operations and maintenance. Breakout of the custodial staff as it is today and has been for, since I've been here, probably even longer. Total full-time equivalents at the Middle and High School is 8.5, six staff members. We have one that's a part-timer. At Morris, we have four. And the breakout is, as you see there, we're asking this year for a new, not position, but stipend. We anticipate an existing employee in these departments would apply for an oversight of the district-wide custodial projects, things of that nature, help coordinate purchasing for cost savings. And that, we've estimated that stipend to be about $15,000. We may need to have some additional hours for existing staff to cover when that person is doing district-wide work, but those hours are small, and I think with a tweak in a schedule, we would be able to accommodate just the stipend without having to have the additional. But I've got some hours in there just in case we can't tweak the schedules of the, you know, I anticipate maybe an evening custodian coming in earlier and leaving earlier. But there to cover the lunches, which is where a lot of the cleanup during the course of the day occurs, and then staying to do an area after the kids, students go home.
Additionally, I mentioned there was three prongs with the curriculum being one of them. The other is HR. So when I arrived, what was communicated to me was curriculum and HR as longstanding concerns to be addressed. And one of the things that comes out of Melissa's office is doing some HR in collaboration with the town. What we'd like to see happen, because it's a, it's kind of a cumbersome process where the communication goes back, and what we'd like, Melissa's office to be the point on HR. We are the lion's share of the, we are the lion's share of the employees in the town, and so to have Melissa take care of, and her office take care of, all the HR, and have it be a, be a point person, and be, have one contact for that, streamlines, streamlines everything for the school, and makes it much easier, particularly the onboarding of, the onboarding of new staff, and the dealing of, with retirees and their, and their questions. So we're looking to do that. In order to do that, we need to take, one of the other things that she has been doing is this facilities coordination. So, we would offer this stipend, an existing employee becomes the facilities coordinator between the two schools, takes this off of, one of the things that Melissa has to do, the project management, the coordination of purchasing, the cost savings, the economy of scale in ordering things, and we build, by doing that, pulling that off of Melissa's plate, allow, will allow her to then take over the HR. So, in the end, with all of these, we, we get the, the HR function much more effective and, and more employee-centered. We get a better, sort of boots-on-the-ground facilities coordination by someone who's in the field, in the schools doing that. And we also end up with a curriculum person.
So here's a breakdown of cost centers within operations and maintenance. The bulk of it, again, is salaries. It's showing, this request is showing an increase of $41,000. We're entering year three of three. The $41,000 includes, the stipend includes the longevity stipends that are in this contract now. So there's been some increases. It also includes, custodians have the opportunity to purchase time if they don't use it, vacation time. So I have to set aside some funding just in case that does happen. There's a small increase in supplies and rubbish removal, but the increase is only $13.55 there. I think that with the coordinated purchasing and the economies of scale that you were talking about, we won't see inflationary increase of 5%, 6%, or even 2%. Hopefully, it's, we can maintain this with this setup. We have a reduction in equipment, which is vehicle maintenance. So the custodians at the Middle and High have a van. It's older, but it's in good shape, and we don't spend as much on it as we had anticipated with it, with it aging. We do keep up with it, though, and we don't, we don't need the full five. Grounds projects, equipments, and subs, there is an increase. We had, there, well, it's a reduction, I'm sorry. We had $2,000 in grounds personnel that was never utilized for a few years. So that's been removed. In the substitute side, though, we had a part-timer who would work full-time in the summer, when they're going through, ceiling to floor of the buildings, who does not, has another job and does not want to do the full-time. So, the sub portion at the Middle and High has increased, because we have to get those hours back. And we do have a sub that did it last year, so we want to continue that. 5439 in buildings, it's really just maintenance of the systems that we have, alarm, security, and then some supplies. And utilities, we have an increase in electric of almost 8%. We did sign a new contract, and that would be the rate. When I'm looking at it, I look at what we've signed, where our funding is currently, and where we're spending, so that if you have an 8% or 7% increase, you don't just add 7% to last year's budget, and you look and see if you're up at the top of it, or are you going to be somewhere in the middle, give yourself some room, maybe you can make it 5% instead of 7%. So that's how I look at the utilities. And we estimated 6% on the other- And we estimated 6% on the other utilities, heat, telephone, things like that. Here's the expenditure categories. Personnel, 56, seems to be, it's a theme. But utilities, 27, and then the rest are, you know, small percentages in this category. We will upload all presentations after presentation here onto the website at that address. If you go under government, you'll see a FY 25 budget. We'll put them all up there, but not until we've had a chance to present it to the full committee.
I had just one other question back on the, I guess it was, I apologize if I just missed this, but under professional development, there's like a new $25,000 line item. What is that for?
That is for a centralized professional development that the curriculum instruction and assessment person can tap into for needs there. As well as, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a nice sized budget. If there was something central that Dr. Collins wanted to do, you could tap into that.
But there's no particular program that it is intended for?
No, the bulk of it will probably fall under curriculum PD.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all for all the work. Well, we, you just referred to, Melissa, just one question, as the crosswalk or the line-by-line for those who want to really look at every, I mean, you gave the summaries of the changes, which would usually be in a separate column which shows plus or minus going down each item.
Yes.
Is that type of detail available for people who want to dig in?
So typically that's, that's available at the end of this month. But I have started working on it and the emails that I sent Friday for Morris had the narrative of each area and then the line-by-line with the historical information and then the new requests and the variances. So you have already received that for Morris and student services for, and you'll receive the same for all others, but for the technology, central admin and, what's the other one?
Middle High School?
No, there were three, technology.
Student services. Operations. Maybe.
Yes, thank you.
We'll just keep throwing.
I've got numbers everywhere, but those I gave a spreadsheet with is what I work, it's what I work off of, but it's got last year's number, this year's number and the variances. But you will get more detail than those, similar to what you received from Morris and student services.
I recognize that.
Then there'll be a whole budget booklet. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you go ahead.
There'll be a whole budget booklet. Probably, once we get the Middleland High School set, ready to go, I'll start preparing that and you'll have it within.
Between the presentations and the night that we scheduled for deliberation?
Yes, yes, definitely.
And then we'll still have the separate night for voting? Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. I recognize that over the years, there's been different ways of approaching this. It kind of likes things in a different way. I'm perfectly happy with what we're seeing, but I want to make sure if people want the additional information, they have it. So, thank you.
It is, it's because these are, these are early, it's difficult to get that full booklet done and accurate, you know? And that's, that's my concern. So if we could do it later in the, in the month before votes, before the next meetings, that would be a perfect schedule, I think.
I think there's been a general discussion about taking a look at how we want to align to make sure that whether it's aligning the budget conversations or whether it's aligning other policy conversations. So that, some of what we've done is based upon what we decided to last year and I think we'll be revamping that, thinking about what does the schedule look like that works for all the subcommittees or for everyone? That'll be a conversation I think we're going to continue to have, so, thank you. Great, I think you just had, snapping, you have the guy?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Because we were, because we were unable to find special education powers that were qualified, we are going to finish out the rest of this year with a contracted service for a power in, in special education at the Morris School.
So the expectation is we will be at some point post for next year, but it wouldn't be as a substitute, it would be looking for a new, a person to fill that position that would not be a contract, that we could find the person?
Correct. And you had the conversation, had the conversation with the LA that we're not looking to permanently turn positions into contracted positions. We just have reached a point where we need to fill a position. At this point, we're just going to, again, contract, just contract a service to get us through the end of the year.
Okay. All right, so subcommittees, government leaders?
Yep, so hopefully we'll be meeting next week and they'll send an email out for some scheduling dates. At the next school committee meeting, we'll talk about it with agenda planning, but we plan on having sections K and G ready for vote.
So that, actually, perfect, because that ties in that we had tabled K, but we're, it's just still a little bit more conversation happening and then you'll present it. Thank you. Okay, human resources? Human resources?
I don't think we've met or done anything since last time.
We need.
We met the other four, so we.
We need to.
Yeah, I think we've had more, meetings more frequently. And same with teaching, learning and culture. We were actually scheduled for next week, the 24th. There's some things that we want to have on our agenda that won't be quite ready. So we, I asked and we agreed to move it to the 31st at 4:30. So we moved that out a week. Finance seems to be this what we're doing.
Same thing. We will reconvene as a subcommittee during that exact period. We were just talking about when the full book comes together.
And building did have a meeting, right? Did it have a meeting?
Yes, we met on January 18th. And we are still pursuing a couple of different lines of thought. One of those that is at the forefront is the possibility of building a freestanding structure behind the high school wing. But there's a lot of questions that have come into play with that. So at this time, we are pursuing some of those by trying to contact engineering or architecture firms just to get some baby step questions taken care of and out of the way before we proceed any further. But we are still anticipating on having Bob Vaughn come in for the capital meeting that we're going to have later in February? And give us.
12th.
Yep, the 12th. And we have a tentative meeting for February 8th to see if those questions, you know, if we've gotten any answers to that point. And then, yep, Bob Vaughn will come in on the 12th and, and give his recommendations at that time.
Great, thank you. Seeing nothing else on our agenda, I will accept a motion to adjourn, to approve, to adjourn.
I move for adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. That was really great.